Okay, well, you can just pick up where you left off. Do you feel like you want to say anything else about that question?
Um, no.
I don't want to cut you off.
No, it's fine. I think the school committee is fine with it. And you don't need the general population to hear it back. But continue.
Okay.
Jennifer Mallett. What is your role in budget planning and development? Once the budget is approved, what involvement would you have in a financial decision during the year? Is applying for grants a part of this process?
I think budget planning and development is important again. As with most of the things that happen in school districts, we need to have a collaborative approach. So we need to work with all stakeholders that are involved in using money that's available in the district. We plan our budget, making sure that we take into account all the things that are necessary. And then looking to see if there's any available funds for things that will be special projects, wishes of the teachers, the administration, the families, reasons we could write for them. Of course, that includes their grants and donations. To make sure that, yeah, we are accounting for all the populations in the school. Be not only in funding, but equally in thought and thought. And yes, definitely, grants are a part of that. Also, we can handle everything that gets to plan. And those changes on the overall. And during the year, I mean, if your leadership seems strong and you trust them, then you don't need to make a budget and you hand it over to the administrators and they take care of that part of it. However, if there are larger expenses or things that come up, I would expect to be part of that process. Just work through the details. And move back to business as usual.
Thank you. Tell us about your experience working on curricula in regards to identifying the need to revise curriculum, implementing a new curriculum, or assessing the curriculum that is already in place. What did you learn from these experiences and how would you use what you have learned? Additionally, how would you hold educators and administrators at all levels accountable for delivering effective instruction related to the outcomes of curriculum development?
Big question. So we'll try and catch up on these as we talk about it. There have been many times where we have changed the curriculum over the years. Now, I think we need to add the bigger picture as in the frameworks and the standards that have come about, but also specifics to math or ELA and how they have grown over time. Recently, we've introduced new math and ELA curriculum. And the ELA curriculum was brought in year by year since we started kindergarten. And each year, we've added on one grade level. This, while a lengthy process, what this allowed for was for our kindergarten to become very proficient at it and that they were able to mentor our first grade teachers. And so, um, so that that way, there was always somebody to fall back on. Now, in addition, there was very good professional development provided by the company that we purchased, the curriculum. So it's definitely a multi-frontal process to bringing in new curriculum. On the other hand, we had a new math curriculum come in and everybody received that at the same time. And there was specific training by grade level and grade band for them. So that everybody received the training, but it was, the curriculum was brought in differently. And both have their merit. And so depending on what is appropriate for each school, grade level, depending on the curriculum, that would be, it would make a difference as to how we brought it in. And I think it's important, I mean, looking at curriculum to really dig into it. Educators need to have a chance to look at it, feel it, see it, try it. They need to be able to feel comfortable with it. And once one is chosen, ensuring that there's enough professional development so that they feel comfortable using it. That's the, I think that's one of the keys, actually. Any, any is good. Any curriculum may be good, but if teachers don't know how to use it, it's useless. So keeping everyone accountable. Um, that comes in not only with professional development, but also with having, um, having teachers do each other, go in and observe each other. Teachers would need, educators would need, administrators would need to be going in, observing, giving feedback. There's a circular motion to it where we go, where we have everybody taking part in that. So educators be educators, administrators be educators. We all are giving feedback and we're all working very, very good.
Thank you. Thanks. Jen, before you start, can I, I'm going to give Dr. Abidah my mic because people are still having a hard time hearing her. And Jen and I can share this one. Okay.
Thank you.
And we want to make sure that they send.
We can share.
Okay, here we go.
Okay.
Our district is a multimillion dollar operation and some people want us to run the district like a business. How do you respond to those people? Additionally, how would you work with local municipal officials when preparing and deciding on the budget while maintaining support for the schools and earning trust for the school department, school committee, and wellbeing of the school community? Okay. So I think the first thing is, is actually, I'm going to touch on the last part of your question first.
Sure.
Because maintaining support and earning trust has to come first. So if I'm selected as your superintendent, one of my first jobs is going to be meeting with school officials, town officials, parents, anybody who has a business in town who's willing to meet with me. Just to, so that we can come to an understanding of what it is that is important to all of us and how we can work together to make that even better. And getting a real understanding of how, what people want. So that when we then turn to looking at the business side of things, we're taking into account everybody's feelings and thoughts and needs, but looking at what actually the school needs and how to work that out. There is a business side to every school, but schools are definitely an animal of their own, if you wanted to put it that way. And we have to treat a school partially as a business and partially as a place where we look at, we take care of children in multiple ways. And so we have to find a way to mesh that together. So the business side is the business side, but there's also the heart and the intelligence and the physicality and all of that part that goes into running a school.
All right. Second parent. How would you develop and sustain a pre-K to 12 comprehensive professional development program? Describe how you will know whether professional development programs and initiatives have affected the knowledge, skills, and practices of educators in the district.
We have to first look at what our curriculum is and what our goals are as a district. From there, we talk to educators about what it is that they think is important, what they feel they either lack or want to learn more about. We look at the curriculum and decide where it is that teachers are strong versus where they need support. From there, we can look at the tools that we have in-house to build professional development as well as what's available outside of our buildings. What is, what is financially feasible? What is non-negotiable? Currently, I use staff members at times to run our professional development if they have a skill that is of particular interest or need. That's a great way to involve more staff members, have people feel like they're really being heard and sharing really good information. There are some curriculas that have excellent professional development that go along with, with what they serve. So depends on what we need to do for each grade level, for each building. But if we're looking at the frameworks and we're looking at a spoken sequence and moving through that correctly from pre-K to 12, it shouldn't, it's difficult work. It's not easy work, but it is doable and it will make sense. So following a spoken sequence definitely from K to 12, PK to 12, will have a lot to do with that. And then how do we know that it has been effective? That's part of the observation process, the observation and feedback routine. So if we're looking at the, we're looking at professional development, we're seeing how teachers are following through with it. We're ensuring that if they need more professional development in that area, we're providing it. Giving them feedback so that they can make it even stronger. You know, um, easy things from, from providing teachers, just the beginnings. For a long time, we had to work on providing objectives that were correct. Just learning how to do that. But that small thing makes a huge difference in the class. Making sure that students are speaking to one another in a way that's respectful, in a way that conveys academic language and understanding. Those are going to be the cornerstones of the professional development and from there, we can build.
Jill Palatier. How would you ensure that the district is providing support and/or enrichment to all students who either fail to meet or exceed the learning standards?
So that's a matter of looking at what we are providing currently and what is available to us either in the district or out of the district. I spoke the other night about ensuring that, that we would look at online programming and other, what the community colleges had available to us and how we could partner with other organizations so that we can offer things on both ends of the spectrum for students who need and want that. And I think, you know, we're not only students who are failing to meet or exceeding learning standards, but our students who are vocational students who want to go into the workforce, who aren't necessarily interested in going to college, but have great desires. Looking at how we can include them in the process will be important because they deserve to have the same educational opportunities. So looking at our vocational options will be important as well.
Thank you.
Jennifer Mallett. When you prepare your budget for the school committee, how do you go about this? And what happens before the proposal reaches the committee? Is there a different process for economic hardship? And how are the staff and school committee involved?
So the first thing in a budget would definitely be, would definitely be speaking to all stakeholders. And I use that, that term a lot, but it's something that I truly believe in. I can't build a budget alone. That's, I, I could say I want this, that, and the other thing, but that isn't necessarily what the district needs. So talking to administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, parents, students, community members, hearing what everybody thinks is important and what they would, their hopes and dreams for a budget. And then we look at the money and we decide what's reasonable and just and what we can afford. And we put proposals together that are, that have negotiables, negotiables, right? What is our best case? What is our worst case? What's in between? Where can we juggle things? Where can we add a little here or take a little away there to make it feel a little more comfortable for people? How can we squeeze out an extra few dollars from this place or that place? And that process is done collaboratively. And the budget takes several iterations. It doesn't happen overnight. We all have to work on it together. And that way, we can ensure that we're doing what's best for students, which is always our goal.
Thank you. As you lead the district, how would you use student performance results to prioritize the use of resources, including money, technology, facilities, and personnel?
So data is a great thing and it's also a bit frustrating, right? And you can make data look a lot of different ways depending on what you need it to do. So we need to make sure that, that student performance results and data are used to our advantage, but are also realistic. And when we look at those, then we can decide where do our resources need to be? Do we have more students who are struggling and need support on one end of the spectrum? Or do we have some who are higher and we can funnel some more money there? The resource part of it needs to be done delicately so that we're taking care of every student. We don't want to leave anybody out. We definitely want to make sure everybody's taken care of. Technology is important because we have, that is the future. We've seen that this year. I mean, if, if nothing else, we've learned that technology plays a bigger part in education than ever before. For our students who, as in the question before, are either excelling or struggling and we're able to get some of those online courses or, you know, from a virtual school and, and tag on with them, you know, it may be that we have a classroom that's, that's a lab and we have one teacher in there and maybe there are students at every table. They're taking different classes through a virtual program. So we're, then we are accommodating a group of students who might not have otherwise had the opportunity to take those courses. So we need to make sure our technology is intact so that we can provide things like that for them. Facilities and personnel, that's a, we have to make sure we're taking care of our facilities and personnel or we won't have a very good school district. And I know that that's difficult sometimes. We all run into times when we might not have the, the people in the building that we need. So we need to be flexible and ensure that all of our staff members are on the same page with us. That comes, once we have some trust and camaraderie in the buildings, we can then, you know, shuffle things around and people are willing to help and do, do the extra. Which I have to say is really what I heard on Tuesday from, from staff and administrators. They were very clear that they are a community of themselves and they are very close knit. And that's one of the things that I just, I left with that feeling that this could be a very beautiful home for me as well because that's the way that I treat my staff now. And that's, that's something that I'm looking for moving forward as well. But it was really beautiful to see how everybody felt that way.
Thank you. I don't think I've said my name, but Jennifer Bartosz. The roles and responsibilities of school committees and superintendents are sometimes clear and sometimes ambiguous. For example, budget approval versus budget implementation or personnel policy and finance versus personnel administration, or even dealing with parents and teachers with concerns or complaints. Can you describe some situations where these roles and responsibilities have challenged you and how you would work to address them where you are superintendent?
There are a lot of different words that mean a lot of different things. So just starting with clear definitions is always one. So if you have somebody in a room and they're using a term and you're not sure they're using it the right way, the best thing to do is ask them. How do you, how are you using that word? What does that mean to you? And in that way, we can make sure that we're all on the same page. There have often been times where I've had families who haven't seen eye to eye, where we've had to sit down and have really tough conversations. I think the thing that, that always strikes me is that you need to sit down to the table without judgment, without preconceived notions. You need to ensure that you are listening to what they're saying and not, not saying, oh, they're saying, what I hear, this is what you're saying. You said, this is what I think I hear you saying. Is that correct? Is this how you see things? How are you trying to, you have to understand how you're trying, they are trying to explain themselves because sometimes they don't know. Sometimes they're trying to tell you something, but they're not sure what words to use. I won't say that, that every time I've had a conversation, we've ended with everybody being happy, but I can tell you that every conversation I've had with a family has ended us with us either agreeing to disagree or agreeing. And we've left in a good space. So I do try to listen to everybody. I do try to make sure that we are on the same page at the end of the day, that we agree to disagree when necessary and that we can move forward collaboratively and in agreement. And I think that when you, when you work that way, you win more often than not. And when I say win, I don't mean me, I mean us. Because the school, when the school wins, that's great. When we lose, it's my loss and it's my job to figure out what happened and how do we fix it?
Stephanie Karen. What is the best role of the superintendent in collective bargaining in your opinion? What are your experiences at the bargaining table? How would you propose that we use the bargaining process to promote student achievement as well as control our expenses?
Sadly, it does come to money, doesn't it? It's the hardest part, right? There's never enough as we want. We always need to take into account that at the end of the day, we're here for the students, yet we need to adequately compensate the people who are doing the hard work. I think that is, that's the most difficult part of it. So the best role of the superintendent is to be a good listener and a good advocate for both sides. Making sure, again, as I said before, that we're listening and we're being respectful, that we are looking to see where we can make some concessions while still being responsible in the education field as, in order to give everybody a fair shake. I mean, everybody needs to feel like they've come out with something without us breaking the bank. So what different things can we come up with? What, you know, everybody can have ideas about things. So we need to take those into consideration and, and find the ways that we can move through together, coming up with, with new strategies and new things to bring to the table that maybe we didn't think of before. You know, maybe we can give a little here and take a little there again. But sometimes those little tweaks, you know, can we give somebody an hour of time to go do something that they need to do and in, and in return, they felt like they've won a little bit of time back, right? From their schedule that we're not picking it, we're not picking away at it. I don't know if I'm being very clear. So, um, for example, something that's come up this year, right? Everybody's going for their COVID vaccines. Something great that I think I've seen, that I've seen that I think has made a big difference is giving a few hours of time for teachers to go do that without penalty to their sick time. It's, it's a small thing, but it's a big thing. So I think that goes a long way at the table to showing that you care. And when people know you care, they're more willing to give. I don't know if I answered the student achievement part correctly, but I think all of that ties into, to when student achievement, the student achievement will go up when teachers feel that they've had part of say in what's happening. And then they feel good about what they're doing. There you go.
Thank you.
All right. It's almost 3:30. It's early.
Right. So Jill Palatier again. You are proposing a highly controversial program. The school committee is seemingly divided on the issue and a group has formed to oppose the new program. You strongly believe that this new program would be highly beneficial to students. And what steps would you take to promote the program?
Well, I would hope that a controversial program that I'm initiating would have, there would be a reason for it in the district. There would be a need for it in the district. So I would have done my research as to why we needed it, what it looked like, what it could look like. I would have asked teachers and administrators and families to be on the committee to help me develop the program. I'm not going to do it by myself. I don't, I don't do most things by myself. If I can, if, if it's possible to have team members, we have team members. So once we put the program together, we would have to have some open meetings where we would share that information and maybe a video or a PowerPoint or a model, if that was appropriate, of what the program would look like, what the benefits were, what the cost was, how the cost analysis made sense to the program, showing how it would be beneficial to students, parents, families, school, district, community, how it dovetailed with any other programs that were in the building so that we could move students from one to the other. Is it the kind of program where students can float in and out? Is it something where they need to be separated? We need to look at all of those things and explain ourselves very carefully, sharing it with everyone, asking for feedback, then looking at the program again and saying, all right, this is the feedback we got. Is it useful? Is it, you know, can we change anything in the program to make it more appealing to people? Looking at all aspects of what the program is and what we've gotten for feedback and then bringing it back to the, to everyone and saying, all right, we took your feedback, this is what we found. We think this is a better program product for you. How, you know, let's look at it now. How can we start this program? Can we start really small? Say it's a student program for, I don't know, middle schoolers, right? Can we take a small group of middle schoolers and pilot the program?
Excuse me. Half hour.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Can we pilot the program and show you what it's worth in terms of people and places and money? And move from there. And in that way, I think we garner more support because we're moving through it slowly and carefully. We're giving people a chance to be part of it. And in that way, I think we garner more support because we're moving through it slowly and carefully. We're giving people a chance to be part of it. And that's the way that, that you, I think it would work best.
Thank you.
Jennifer Mallett. Do you think technology has really changed education beyond the bells and whistles that we all see? How do you see our district assessing our technology needs? And how would you go about looking at a technology plan for our future? Who would be involved in that discussion and how would you budget for the upgrades?
So interestingly enough, in 2017, I wrote a book called, I co-wrote a book called Lecture Hall to Laptop. That looked at the way in which colleges and college students had moved from a lecture hall mentality to a laptop mentality. It was very interesting and I had a lot of fun writing it, but it does show you that in a very short period of time, life has really been changed by technology. And, and that we really need to consider what it's going to look like in the future. Clearly, COVID has pushed us further and faster than we would have expected, or maybe even hoped. I do think that technology has a place in education, but I also think we need to be careful about how we use technology in education. Putting kids in front of a screen every day, all day, I do not believe is best practice. Students need to be with teachers, with stu-, with, you know, peers. I don't think there's, I don't think there's a second for that. I think that that's really important at all grade levels. So looking at technology needs in the district, looking at what you already have. And then looking at where we want to be in five years, maybe, or three years. A five-year plan, a three-year plan, a two-year plan. And then looking at what our options are. I heard from the technology director how he has begged, borrowed and stole from a number of places to, to get the technology that you have. And it's really amazing and, and I applaud him. And so now we need to see how we can help him get, do more, do better. I think looking at grants or places like maybe the Gates Foundation, are they doing anything for tech, uh, technology grants? Is Google doing anything? Is Apple doing anything? Who can, for lack of a better word, give us the best deal? You know, who's willing to support us the most as we move forward? And, and finding those ways that, that the big technology piece, the infrastructure and the lap, and the hardware, how can we make those really solid for our students, but then also looking at software needs and viability? How can we make those adequate for our students? How often do we want our students on computers? All of those kinds of things need to be addressed. And again, as I've been saying all along, that's a collaborative process. Everybody has a stake in it. Everybody gets to have an opinion. Doesn't mean that everybody's going to be able to be the, the right, the, for lack of a better term, the right person at the end of the day, you know, that decision at the end has to come from looking at the budget and the needs. And, and how we feel about things, that has to be taken into consideration, but everybody gets to have a say. So that we can, we can move forward as a district and a community in a way that, that is good for students. You know, over and over, I heard how important students were to the district. How students come back as grownups. How everybody wants, they come back. Generational education in this district is very important. It's a legacy. You can see it every day. Everybody talked about it on Tuesday. And so making sure that we're taking care of everybody for generations is going to be really important. And technology is part of that. And you said there were 13 questions and there's only 12 on the page. So what's the magic one?
I've got the magic.
I've been guessing for days.
Stephanie Karen, the magic question. Is there anything else that we have not yet covered or asked you about that you would like to share?
Yeah, there's the magic one, right?
You're welcome.
I have to tell you that I have really enjoyed this process. Meeting everybody in Granby has been exciting and interesting. You have beautiful, I know that you all think the high school needs some help, but you have a beautiful building. Ally said to me, and, oh shoot, what was the word she used? A vintage, a vintage building. And, and she's right, it's beaut-, but it has such beautiful quirks to it. And so, and this building is beautiful as well. And the people inside of it are just really special people. And I, I just really enjoyed my week. I, I think that you are all very fortunate to live in Granby, work in Granby, have students in Granby. And if I'm fortunate enough to be part of that, I promise not to let you down. I know that my staff is, is worried, but they are fabulous and they have, I think that they have allowed me to become a really, to really grow this year. And I applaud them for that. And so moving forward, I'd like to help others do that as well. And I think Granby would be a great place to do that. So it's a nice, small home community, someplace that I would feel comfortable. And I hope that you saw that, that it's important to me to be part of your community.
Thank you. No.
More questions?
That is it. Yeah. So yeah, that's the end of the questions. And I want to say too, thank you to you for, you know, through this process. And, and having this time with us and getting to know you a little bit better and, and sharing as openly as you have been, which is really nice.
That's kind of who I am. I'm pretty open about everything. So.
Yeah. I want to offer the same thing as Audrey too, because we certainly, you know, through the search committee and, and this process as well, it's, it's been a pleasure, absolute pleasure. So thank you for that.
Thank you. All right.
So we will take, we're going to leave the Zoom open, but we're going to take a stretch break. And the next interview begins at 7:30, 7:30. All right. The time now is 7:28 and we're going to begin the second part of our evening with our second finalist, Mr. Stephen Sullivan. The way this will work is we have 13 questions. You have 12 there and then we have one magic question at the end. And we'll go around and ask those as we go. And then we have a timekeeper that will let you know when we're halfway through the, through the interview time. Do you have any questions or anything on the process?
Nope.
Okay. Then we're going to jump right in. So I'm Jennifer Bartosz. This is your first question. How would you describe your leadership style and what particular strengths do you believe you will bring as superintendent to the Granby School System?
Thank you. Thank you again for having me. I appreciate it. The process is long, but I'm appreciated. I've gone a lot through it as well. And nobody goes and puts so much into it. In terms of leadership style, I see myself as collaborative, inclusive of others, certainly. And you know, my goal is always to have shared decision-making. I want to develop a common understanding about what our goals are, what our priorities are. And what are the steps we're going to do, not only to, to, to progress towards those goals, but also how are we monitoring our progress? So what's going to tell us that we've met these goals? And that's important for me to know, but I think it's also important for our teachers to know, our parents to know, our students to know. Right? We're not moving the goalposts every time we set a goal. We want to make sure we're really clear about what those goals are and what our plan is to get to those goals. We also know that sometimes, right, the best plans and the best goals, we start to veer off. And I think it's important as the leader that we, that I maintain our focus on what those stated goals are. I think it's always up for discussion. Because things change, circumstances change. For example, a, a goal that we had in February of 2020 is probably not the same goal that we have now. So I think we constantly need to reflect on that. And I think as a leader, you need to let your team know when it's time to reflect and when it's time to maybe reconsider where we're headed or saying, all right, even though we're not there yet, we're not to this goal yet, we're, we're going to stay on this path because we're making good progress. And this is in the information telling us that we're making progress towards, towards those goals. So I think, you know, in terms of strength, I think one thing that I'm, I would bring to this position is I've been in the district. I know the people in the district. I've been able, I, I think to accomplish some really great things at the junior, senior high school. And it's not just me, it's the team over there. But I think we worked really hard early on when I first started at the junior, senior high school around our climate and culture. And that's not just about students, but about the staff, climate and culture as well. And I think it's come a long way. And that's, of course, the first thing I talked about was a lot about goals and setting those goals and working towards those goals. When you're talking about climate and culture, it can be a bit more difficult to to determine whether you've met that goal per se. But I think anecdotally and just what we see in terms of practice and people's willingness to do things, it's changed quite a bit in the four years since I started as principal at the junior, senior high school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Mallett. What is your role in budget planning and development? Once the budget is approved, what involvement would you have in the financial decision during the year? Is applying for grants a part of this process?
Yeah. So I, I think the budget planning and development process is probably never over. I think once you have a budget approved for FY '22, you immediately start looking at FY '23, or at least soon thereafter. It's a, it's a cycle and can be really challenging. But I think in terms of planning, we, we work really hard to create, and Adam Turquini says it a lot of the time, says, create your Cadillac of budgets. And then we need to prioritize where our needs are. Where does the, what does the data tell us that we need to prioritize? And I, as a school leader, may say, you know what, I really want to prioritize this. But if I can't support that with the data, then I'm just going to be out there kind of alone in the wind. And I think it's important that we can have data to, to support the decisions that we're making. You know, and when, once approved, I, I think part of the budget, part of the budget is going to be specific to certain departments, be it the junior, senior high school, or East Meadow, or special education, director of pupil services, facilities and maintenance. So those are places where I'm going to believe in the leaders that we have, the department heads that we have, to make good use of the funds that have been allocated to them in their department. And I anticipate, of course, things come up, but I'm going to trust in those leaders. And again, if things change, we sometimes need to change course. We need to be nimble enough and creative enough to, to identify places where, okay, we started down this path, but let's take a step back and really reassess where we're headed with this. Does this align with our goals? Does this align with our core values as a, as a school or as a district? And tough decisions need to be made every year in the budget. And, you know, in the end, that's going to come down to the superintendent making some tough decisions. But I think when you're thinking of those, those segment, those departments, if, if you will, I have to make tough decisions at the junior, senior high school about what ends up in the final budget or what doesn't end up. And again, it's trying to go back to that data to support those decisions. Also knowing that, you know, sometimes those decisions aren't going to make everybody happy, but there's a finite amount of money. And we always want more, but you know, the budget is challenging. And I think especially in a, a town like Granby where 80% of our budget is wrapped up in teacher salaries. So you have to be really creative with that other 20%.
Thank you.
Can I finish that answer now that I looked at the page? I didn't talk about the grants. So I think grants are critical in a district like ours to supplement the budget. So the, a few years ago, we wrote a grant for Project Lead the Way to bring hands-on, engaging STEM education. And we focused on our middle school. It was a strategic decision to focus on the middle school because I think those students, those students need it and they need to have experiences in those fields that may not always be available to them in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade. So in middle school, we want to afford them those opportunities. We're also now working with Project Lead the Way to move to their project launch program, which is K to five. So I know we're excited about that. And then Project Lead the Way also has some high school offerings. But the decision, like I said, was strategic to pursue a grant like that because we have AP computer science, we have AP biology, we have an anatomy and physiology class. So we don't want to have redundancy in places. We want to create something new and to bring in a, a design and modeling class, which is based in engineering, a science of technology class. And for this year, our first year offering automation and robotics, I think that's engaging to students and they want to be a part of that. And I think, I said it on Monday in the public forum, it's so important for students in those grades to start identifying not just what they want to do in their career, but what they may not want to do. So having those experiences and saying, oh, this doesn't really fit what I want. Maybe I want to go on this path instead of this path. Those decisions don't just start when you get in ninth, 10th, or 11th and 12th grade. Thank you.
Audrey Shida. Tell us about your experience working on curricula in regards to identifying a need to revise curriculum, implementing a new curriculum, or assessing the curricula that is already in place. What did you learn from these experiences and how would you use what you have learned? Additionally, how would you hold educators and administrators at all levels accountable for delivering effective instruction related to the outcomes of curriculum development?
Yeah, I think we're, in some ways, we're living that right now in Granby. We've spent the last year, two years, really starting to say, when the new position, the curriculum and technology integration coordinator came in, Beth Craven at the time, and now Sue Crego, really did a deep dive into the district. I think they identified some things that myself and Carol and Cheryl at the time, and Bill had identified as well as, like, we really need some clarity around our curriculum, right? We're, we're seeing that this lesson, for example, is being taught in our fifth grade science class, but it's a sixth grade standard. So there becomes redundancy in those places. So really taking a look at the standards, identifying what those focus standards or power standards, some districts may call them, for each course, when we think about the high school level, but at each grade level, when you think about K to eight. So what are, what are those standards saying? And again, I keep talking about redundancy because there really is redundancy in everything that we're, if you look at the standards, there's a lot of similarity between one standard to the next. So we're not going to teach every single standard the same amount of time. That would take years to get through every grade level. So picking and choosing and identifying those places that we need our students to develop those skills and understand that content knowledge in a better way. You know, the data is going to lead us to some of those places. But it's not just MCAS either. I've said to the staff at the junior, senior high school many times, MCAS, you know, it's a necessary evil at this point right now, but it's also an autopsy, right? Like at that point, by the time you get the MCAS results, you can't do anything about it with that group. Right? You, by the time you have the MCAS results, that student You, by the time you have the MCAS results, that student is now with a different teacher. So that teacher can use some of that information, but we need formative assessments and summative assessments um, that are objective, that provide data that is tied to the standards similar to the, similar to what the MCAS is. So those can guide our decisions. Um, in terms of accountability, uh, I, I think it comes down to supervision and evaluation. I, I think it's critical, um, that we have strong supervision and, and evaluation. And that's of the, of student learning, but it's also of teachers and it's also, um, of administrators. And, you know, I've talked early on about setting these goals and setting these priorities for the schools and for the district. Those need to be our guiding light throughout the course of the year. And those conversations around supervision and evaluation need to always come back to what those goals are. Um, you know, if we're spending the time to identify those power standards and identify our goals for the year, then when we're doing that in July and August and early in September, at that point, they're important enough for us to have identified, especially when we're all fresh to start a year. Um, and it's easier to veer off course in January and February when you get into, um, the winter. But continuing to bring it back to those goals, um, through supervision and evaluation, and it's not just supervision and evaluation shouldn't be this hammer that everybody thinks. The, the goal around educator evaluation is really about improving professional practice. Um, and I think, you know, the hammer that people worry about, there is a place for that, but that shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. That, that comes over time when, you know, we've identified these goals, we're giving this feedback, it's not being implemented. We give more feedback, it's not being implemented. I think when there's resistance or there's not buy-in to the practice, that's when it becomes an issue. But I think all in all, the goal of the evaluation system is about improvement and growth.
Thank you. So you can give you a minute to look it over yourself to make sure that you felt comfortable.
I think so. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our district is a multimillion dollar operation, and some people want us to run the district like a business. How do you respond to those people? Additionally, how would you work with local municipal officials when preparing and deciding on the budget while maintaining support for the schools and earning trust for the school department, school committee, and well-being, well-being of the school community?
Yeah, quite a challenge, isn't it? Like, nobody knows it better than you guys. Um, and you're living it like as we speak, and we're, as administrators, we're living it with you. And it's, it's challenging, it's exciting, it's frustrating, it's, it produces anxiety for us um, because there's all these unknowns that are connected to it. But, um, I think transparency, transparency is critical. Um, you know, being open about it, but I think even before then, working as a school committee, working as a administrative team and saying, like, what are, what is our shared vision of the district? How, how do we develop this shared understanding so that when we are out speaking to the community, there's a group of 10 or 15 of us, however many it might be, that we're speaking that common language? We have this in other places, you might call it an elevator speech, that one-minute speech that you can get these key points across for the questions that we know are going to come up. Because, right, let's be honest, at this point, the questions aren't so much the surprise for us. I think we know what the questions are for the most part. Um, but having that consistent, well-thought-out answer, um, and response to people, I think shows that the organization, be it business-like or school-like, like, we're, they're in a good place. Because when I talked to this school committee member, and I talked to the superintendent, and I talked to the principal, they all gave me a very similar response, and the goals are the same, the objectives are the same. There's continuity there, there's good communication, and I think that is really important for people to see. Um, you know, I, I, and I think in working with a municipality, I, I think it's challenging in any municipality. School budgets are large. I, I think we'd be hard-pressed to find any community where the school department isn't the biggest or second biggest part of their municipal budget. Um, and I think people need to understand that. And then we need to think creatively about how do we bring in resources beyond what our operating budget that, that, that has been passed through the town? Like, what are the grant opportunities? Um, how do we get the rural schools coalition to work for us? Um, how, how can we use the Student Opportunity Act money? Right, a town like Granby is not going to get a ton of money from SOA, but I think if we start thinking about the rural schools and, you know, hitting the right pressure points for things, I, I think, you know, being strategic in that way, um, could, could give us a new perspective in what the budget looks like.
Thank you. Stephanie Parent, how would you develop and sustain a pre-K to 12 comprehensive professional development program? Describe how you will know whether professional development programs and initiatives have affected the knowledge, skills, and practices of educators in the district.
I think first and foremost, we want to make sure that the curricula is sound. Um, I think that becomes our foundation, and the professional development, it's difficult to start building if we don't have that, don't have that foundation. I, I think once we have that foundation, we have an assessment system tied to that, which we get data from, which informs the decisions that we need to make for professional development, um, based on what we need for student outcomes. And, um, I also think it's, we, we want to identify methodology that, and pedagogy that is going to support student learning best. Are our students learning from a lecture style? Or are 90% of our students really hands-on, and that's when they're getting that information? Because sometimes it's a shift in what we're comfortable with. Um, and that can be scary, and that can be challenging, but we often say that when we're uncomfortable, it, it provides the best opportunity for us to grow. Um, and I think that's the same for our students, and nobody can model that better than our teachers. So if our teachers are willing to take that step and find those opportunities for growth, even when it's uncomfortable, I think our students will see that they're committed to the process as well. And, you know, mistakes happen to all of us, mistakes are failures. And I think when students can see we as adults learn from those mistakes, um, i- it's critical to their development because, right, we make them every day. And I think sometimes students get so anxious about a test or getting something wrong that even if they know the information, or they can practice or apply that skill, they're not able to show it in that way because so much pressure has been built up around the assessment or whatever, or whatever is put in front of them. So I think we as educators need to say, like, I know this student knows this material, even if they got a 40, whatever that means on their test. So how do I pull it out of them in a different way? And I think professional development around things like that, um, are critical to help, um, teachers, administrators, um, professional growth. I also think that it's not just about our teachers, I also think about our paraprofessionals. Many of our paraprofessionals, having that role is so critical, they're in the classrooms all the time. That is a pathway to become a teacher, and we should be able to identify that for our paras. Not every paraprofessional wants to become a teacher, but those that do, how do we support them in developing those skills and making sure that they get those certifications? Um, right, because we're going to know a lot about those paraprofessionals that are in the classroom because they're in the classroom every day, they're working with these students closely. And, um, if they want to become a teacher, how do we support that? Because I think when we're growing people from within, um, again, we, we can flourish and continue to grow as a district.
Thank you. Jill Powell here. How would you ensure that the district is providing support and/or enrichment to all students who either fail to meet or exceed the learning standards?
Yeah, it's critical, but one of the most difficult things in any school or district. Um, I think the default for some people is like, if I teach to the middle, then I'm going to get the low and I'm going to get the high. But, like, honestly, it's just not good enough, right? So how do we have, um, a multi-tiered system of support for the students that need it? But how do we provide opportunities for, for students to extend beyond what's expected in that, in that class? How are we flexible and nimble enough to support students? Um, you know, some people would say, like, we're not having 10th graders take an AP class. And my thought would be, why aren't we having 10th graders take an AP class? Well, why couldn't they be successful i- in advanced placement? Or why couldn't they be successful, um, taking a dual enrollment class? Um, we've done a little bit of that, I think, in our eighth grade. You can see it where our eighth graders are able to take ninth grade math. We have eighth graders taking Spanish one. So we've dabbled in it a little bit, but, um, I think there's real opportunity for, for growth in that place. Again, the data is going to be really important. And I think in this case, the data is important sometimes for the teachers to see, like, oh, wow, this 10th grader can do this work because look at the work they're doing here. Or it's not just about high school, I think some of those things happen. How do we personalize learning for a second grader? Well, if that second grader is so far advanced in their literacy skills, then maybe they're in a third grade or a fourth grade. And, right, I think we're often fit so much within this box in education that we don't even know our way out. And I consider myself pretty open-minded and am willing to be creative. But sometimes when people say something about the schedule, and I'm like, well, like, this is the schedule, and how do we, like, work outside of that? And we have found some ways, um, in some ways haven't worked as well as we had hoped. In some ways that we didn't expect to work have worked really well. Um, you know, be it our school-to-work students, or students are taking more dual enrollment classes. We're talking about dual enrollment on campus for next year. Um, Hoyt Community College teaching courses at Granby Junior Senior High School. Um, so students can earn high school and college credit for those. Um, you know, I also think about some of our partnerships. We partnered with, um, well, we have to partner with DESI, but in this case, we chose to partner with DESI around the high school senior internship and education program. It's brand-new, literally, um, this is very much like DESI, like, it came out in December, and then they wanted answers by February, and now we have students. We have three seniors this year right now. Um, one of them is teaching one week, um, because we have a week-on, week-off schedule right now. One week he's teaching three seventh and eighth grade math classes, um, of course, with Mr. Creo. But he's taken on some of that, and I talked to Mr. Creo about it a couple of days ago. And this senior and an eighth grader, he, Mr. Creo said, had this back and forth that Mr. Creo learned from. He said, the eighth grader was like, I'm just going to put this answer down. I'm just going to, I'm just going to put, and the senior was like, no, you can do this. Like, you can do this, you can learn, you can learn this, and it's better that you learn this now. And the eighth grader, no, I'm just going to put it. And the senior just would not give up, and the eighth grader came around and tried it the, the senior's way. And, um, you know, Mr. Creo even said, it's like, it got to a point where I almost stepped in and was like, we're not getting anywhere, but he did get somewhere. So those are opportunities that students aren't going to have if we don't put them in a position to have those opportunities. Um, so, um, I think that's for a student, right? He's a- advanced in math, he can do that. But then we also partner with Mass Rehab to help some of our diverse learners find job opportunities. Um, we're in a really good place with Mass Rehab last February and March. And again, everything kind of pumped the brakes, and we're, it's restarting. Um, but those are students who need something different than this student who's teaching a seventh and eighth grade math class. So how do I identify their strengths so we can put them in a place to be successful, um, outside of the classroom as well?
Thank you. Jennifer Mallett, when you prepare your budget for the school committee, how do you go about this and what happens before the proposal reaches the committee? Is there a different process for economic hardship, and how are the staff and school committee involved?
So to start, I, I would say, the question reads, when you prepare your budget for the school committee? I think in some ways, we're preparing it together. Um, I, I don't think the budget is or should be a surprise to you the first time it gets presented. Um, might be at the finance subcommittee or at regular meetings. There's all, the budget's hanging over everything that we do. So I think first and foremost, um, my hope would be that it's a collaborative process and that everybody in the school committee feels like it's a collaborative process. And, um, it might take some work to get there, maybe a little work, maybe a lot of work. I, I can't say that for sure, but I, I would hope that i- if I were the next superintendent, you would feel that we're creating this budget together. And those questions that you might have that come up now, we can be having conversations about in November and December, so we can iron, iron some of those things out. Because the, the budget is so nuanced, and I don't know every detail of it, but, um, I will. And, you know, we have Adam in place, who, um, I think has done a great job since he's come on. So to be able to rely on him, and I think, like, I want to have a relationship with the school committee where we can have these conversations early. So we're having, I say, often to, in, in school, I say, we have September problems in September. The problem, the problem is when we have September problems in March, right? So we have the problems ahead of time so that we can adjust them. So when it comes February, March, April, again, we're all well-versed. When we're going to meet with the finance committee, when we're meeting with, um, friends who are asking us about town meeting, we're giving the same information, we're sharing the same information. And, uh, we're making sure that we're really positive and supportive of each other and the process, and really clear about how the budget got to where it was based on our district's goals and priorities.
Thank you. Arthur Shuda, as you lead the district, how would you use student performance results to prioritize the use of resources, including money, technology, facilities, and personnel?
Talked a lot about redundancy, and I feel like I'm going to be redundant in my answer because I've talked about this a few times. Um, but I think our performance results are, are critical. We need to know how we are, we need to where, know where we stand as objectively as possible. I think teacher-created assessments are important and certainly have a place. Um, but we need, we need assessments, and we need to get data that is based, that is evidence-based, that is going to allow us to focus on areas that our students maybe haven't been as successful in as they could be, right? And maybe we're identifying areas where students have been really successful and, like, digging into why that happens. And maybe we find out students are really successful because this certain standard is part of every single unit this teacher does. So I'm not saying we get rid of that, but maybe we need to build in other priority standards into that space so we can see if we get the same success from there. And if we're not measuring it consistently, we're never going to know. Again, back to that MCAS question, we're, that's not going to help us as much as we'd like. So having those consistent opportunities, be it through MAP, which we had this last year. Um, this year, we're doing, um, we're using iStation. Um, it was approved through DESI, so we're trying that, um, i- in seventh and eighth grade. And really looking at that data, it's just gotten up and running. But the plan is that we're going to have an assessment system that we can monitor progress throughout the year, and we can shift our practice at any point, right? I, I think, I know the days of, like, working really hard and doing our best, and then come, like, the spring, hoping that our kids did really well. Um, I feel like those days are numbered. I think we're going to walk into May or April when our kids are taking that test, and we're going to have a really good idea of where those kids are going to fall before they ever take the test because we're monitoring it, starting the first day of school in August, right up until the day they walk in. right up until the day they walk in and take those exams. You know, in terms of money, resources, facility, we need to be creative. We need to be, we need to be nimble. But I also want to go back to our, what are our core values, right? Is it centrality of the classroom? So when we're making a decision, are we going to get this resource for this classroom? Or are we going to put new shades in the classroom? Like, hey, we need both, but we might not have money for both. So where, where are our core values lie? And I know my core values, but I think as a district, as an organization, like it takes some time to develop what those are, how you share those values. And I anticipate spending some time doing that right off the bat. And we've spent a couple of years doing that at the junior, senior high school, longer than we would hope. Again, I think we relied on our student advisory committee to develop school core values. And again, we were in a really good place last year and things kind of, we had to hit the brakes. But like the, our student advisory committee has like picked that student advisory council has picked that up again this year and building from there. And I think, right, core values are so important because those are, that's what's going to guide the decisions that we make and who we are as a district.
Thank you. Halfway more. Okay. The roles and responsibilities of school committees and superintendents are sometimes clear and sometimes ambiguous. For example, budget approval versus budget implementation, or personnel policy and finance versus personnel administration, or even dealing with parents and teachers with concerns or complaints. Can you describe some situation where these roles and responsibilities have challenged you and how you would work to address them were you our superintendent?
Yeah, I feel, I think you're right. I think sometimes the role, they are ambiguous and it's difficult, right? There's, there's nothing black and white about what any of us do. And I go back again to that shared vision. It's going to take some time for this school committee and the next superintendent to develop what that shared vision for the district is. And I think if we get there and we understand what each other's core values are, I think we can remove some of that ambiguity, maybe not all of it. You know, because I think there's some places where despite clarity and despite having good communication, we just might not agree on something. And I said Monday night, that, that's okay too. We're not going to agree on every single decision, but we can have respectful discourse and we can support our claims and we can work with each other. But our goal is always to be moving in the same direction, right? Taking steps forward to whatever the goals and priorities that we've set as a school, as a district are. And I think some of that ambiguity will, will always be there. But I think having that strong communication and being able to have a conversation or pick up the phone and say, hey, I saw this in an email, I'm not sure that I agree with it, but I'm also not sure that I understand it in the way that it was written in the email. So let's talk through it. Having a relationship like that, I think, is so critical. And also sometimes making a concession to say that, you know what? I may not totally agree with it, but I see the value in it. I recognize the path that you want us to go on as a group or as a whole does, does make sense for whatever it is that we're talking about. And being able to sometimes, I'm thinking about professional development yesterday and Sue Crago had two ways to put it, but the harsh way was from Stephen King was like, kill your darlings. Like you have this plan and this idea that you love, but it might not work for that instance. So you need to be able to walk away from it, right? You need to say, okay, like I really want this for us. I think it would be great, but as a collective, we're not there. So I need to take a step back and reflect on that and figure out how we can move forward towards our goals. And by me holding on to that, isn't going to help us move forward. Maybe I'll bring it up again in a year or 18 months or two years if I still see value in it. But I think that's part of our shared responsibility is to say, even when there is ambiguity or disagreement, that we can still move forward. We're strong enough together that we're going to continue to move us in the right direction.
Thank you. Stephanie Perry. What is the best role of the superintendent in collective bargaining in New York City? What are your experiences at the bargaining table? How would you propose that we use the bargaining process to promote student achievement as well as control our expenses?
Yeah, I think the best role for the superintendent, I, I see it as having an understanding of the full scope of what the district needs, really understanding what that data is that I keep referring to and putting that in front of people when it needs to be in a place. And it, again, it doesn't need to be used as a hammer, but we say like, this is why we're proposing this. Of course, let's identify a place where we need to compromise, where we maybe need to back off of something. You might, you might need to concede something, right? I think it doesn't start when you first go into negotiations. It doesn't first, it doesn't start when you first go into collective bargaining. I think it starts with the relationships that you're able to build with the people around the table and for them to understand where you're coming from. And right, like I don't think anybody's in collective bargaining, walks into collective bargaining thinking, oh, we're going to get everything that we want. This is our list and we're going to get everything. And I think if you think that, I think you're going to be sorely disappointed every time that you go into it. I think you should have that list. I think that list needs to be prioritized. But I think if you have that relationship on the front end, then that's such an important place to start because both sides need to know we're working for the same goal. We're working to improve these student outcomes, to support these students, to support these programs. And that's what we want, that's what we need to do to grow as a district. And I think that's another thing, and I've said it a couple of times tonight. I think if there's one thing that like we all need to agree on is that like everybody can grow, every one of our students can grow and develop new schools. Every one of our teachers can grow and do things differently and do things better. Our administrators, our school committee, our principals, our superintendent, having that growth mindset is so critical, I think, to the success in any classroom. But of course, as a, as an organization as a whole.
Thank you. Jennifer Mallett. You are proposing a highly controversial program. The school committee seemingly divided on the issue. And a group has formed to oppose the new program. You strongly believe that this new program will be highly beneficial to students. What steps would you take to promote the program?
Well, I, I think first, I'll go back to transparency. School committee shouldn't be finding out about a program that may or may not be controversial at a public meeting, the first time, just having it dropped on you and saying, hey, we're looking to do this as of May 1st. That's not fair to put anybody in a spot like that. And I think if you're, as a superintendent, if you're considering a controversial program, there's a reason why. So it's because test scores are down, it's because climate and culture is struggling, it's because teacher morale is down, whatever it might be. There is a reason that you're proposing this controversial program. So it's likely that we've had a discussion at some point about the, the reason for that. And I think it's important that we have that relationship and good enough communication that say, hey, when we talked about this, this is what I'm thinking. And my hope would be that if it's a controversial program or viewed as controversial when the first time that we have a conversation, my hope is that by the time we're talking about it at a full committee meeting, that it doesn't feel as controversial, people understand both sides. Or maybe it never gets to that point. But I also know there's going to be some things where as a superintendent, I'm going to feel that I need this to happen for these reasons. And I'm going to do my best to support that with the information that you as a school committee would need so that you feel that you're informed and you feel that you're part of the process. Because just because it's a controversial program doesn't mean that the conversation around it needs to be contentious. Again, it comes back to having that relationship, being able to have those conversations and knowing that we're all coming from a good place and we want to do what's best for our school and our students, even if we have different perspectives on whatever that idea may be. But I think we, you know, and we also need to be clear about our purpose. I talk about that to teachers when giving feedback to teachers too, is what's, what's your purpose? Like why, why are we doing this? And how do students know why we're doing this? We're not just learning this because like today is this day and it's the day that we learn about X, Y, and Z. We're doing this because it's a purpose. It connects to something that we learned previously and it's going to connect to something else that we're going to do down the road. So I, I think in my role, if I can be clear to all of you about what the purpose is, I feel that it's going to feel like a lot less superintendent versus school committee when we're having those conversations. And you know, and we might decide in private that, you know, we need to go in another direction. And that's fine, but I think if the decision or the program that we're trying to be, bring in is based on data and relevant information, then that problem isn't going to go away by not bringing in the controversial program. Maybe it's just we need to look at something else.
Jennifer Mallett. Do you think technology has really changed education beyond the bells and whistles that we all see? How do you see our district assessing our technology needs? And how would you go about looking at a technology plan for our future? Who would you, who would be involved in the discussion and how would you budget for the upgrade?
Yeah, there's a lot of layers to that question. So I, I think first, I think technology has really changed education beyond the bells and whistles. I don't think it's all positive, but I think there's some things that we're going to take with us from teaching throughout this pandemic that are going to improve student learning outcomes after the pandemic. I, I think there are, be it programs or software or ways to communicate that are going to benefit students beyond the pandemic. Do I think it's good that some, that some students are on Zoom for six hours a day and then have homework online after that? No, I, I don't. I don't think any one of us does. I don't think what happens on a Zoom can replace what happens in a classroom or even what happens out be it in nature or on a field trip or whatever that might be. But, and in terms of our district assessing our technology need, we, we did that. About two years ago, Sun and Associates came through and did a full, did a full assessment of our technology as a district. And we acted on some of those things right away. We now are one to one, every student, K to 12, could be one to one with a Chromebook. It might be iPads for the younger students, but everyone has a device, has the opportunity to have a device. And our teachers now have laptops. That was part of that, that assessment as well. And you know, I think in some ways that's been met with like some different opinions on that. I think some teachers were used to having the, the desktops in their room, which are a little bit bigger. The laptop screens are smaller, so there's been some adjustment to that. But I think that technology assessment that was done, I think we've acted on some of those things pretty quickly and made some implementations. And I think the pandemic has forced us to do some of it quicker than we may have. But again, I keep using the word nimble. I, I think it's a credit to the school committee and the leadership team that they've been nimble enough to make those changes under these circumstances. And in terms of long-term planning for technology, I think it's important that we have a plan. But I, I'll be honest, I worry a little bit about a technology plan for three or five years down the road because technology changes so quickly. So you spend the time on a five-year technology plan that's out of date six months later. Is that the most efficient and effective use of our time? So I think we need to ask ourselves those questions. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't be planning for technology and shouldn't have a technology committee that is assessing our needs and identifying our strengths with technology. But you know, I, I think we need to ask ourselves, is it important that we have a plan? And some people may feel that, yeah, we should have a plan in writing. And some people might feel that having these conversations about it and identifying next steps in the moment in any given, at any given point. I think that could be considered good practice in technology as well. And again, I think we want to be purposeful with our technology. What is it being used for? How are we leveraging it? You know, and I also think about, technology is necessary. Our students are going to use technology when they go post-secondary, be it military, work, college, whatever it might be, there's going to be an aspect of technology that our students need to be prepared for. So how do we engage them in that process as well? And some of our students, we should probably have a student help desk up and running now because they can do some of the things that I'm certainly not able to do. I still have a single monitor in my room. I feel like I'm the only one that has a single monitor these days. But like, you know, David Lukashevitz doesn't need to be the one running around and setting up second monitors and clearing jams in the printer. I think a student help desk where some of our students who might be interested in that can gain experience, can gain experience through some of those smaller things. So internships and things like that aren't always going to be at these big corporations or organizations. I think we have some opportunities within our school, within our town that we, that we should be considering.
Thank you. The magic question, I have it.
Can't wait.
All right. Stephanie Perry. Lucky question 13. Is there anything that we have not covered, not yet covered or asked you about that you would like to share?
Just tonight, through the whole process. I think you, we've covered everything. I actually said to somebody the other day, I feel like, I don't know that I'm repeating myself to everybody all the time or if it's just people that have been in, like Audrey and Jill were part of the screening committee and then part of the public, so they've heard some of the things more and more and more. So no, I, I think, and I said it to the screening committee and I said it on Monday night, that I enjoy working in Granby. I am not actively looking, I have not been actively looking for jobs. It's just this job happened to present itself. And it's an opportunity, of course, for me personally, but I think for us as a district to continue on the trajectory that we're on, which I feel, yeah, has it been, has there been a hiccup in the past year or so? Yeah, I, I think a lot of districts are dealing with that. But I think we're on a positive trajectory. And I think knowing the players and knowing the people involved, I think I can continue to take us to that next level as part of the team. And I would consider the school committee part of that team, the leadership team, teachers, parents. It's a pretty big team for a small town. But I think, you know, there are people engaged at both schools and that's what we want. That's what we want for, in our schools, that's how our schools are going to get better. We need feedback from parents, we need, we need feedback from students. We, that, that's how we're going to continue to grow. And you know, we talk a lot, we also talk about accountability and things like that. I think the best organizations are when you're accountable to each other. You're accountable to that teacher next to you or that student next to you. You're not accountable to. that teacher next to you or that student next to you. You're not accountable to me because I have the title of principal or superintendent or I'm a school committee member. We're accountable to each other because we all want the same thing. We all want to move in the same direction and we want what's best for the youth in this community. And we all know that the Granby Public Schools should be the first choice for every Granby family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes our interview. Thank you very much for taking the time and coming and meeting with us. Our plan is we're going to start celebrations now. And I guess I don't know, I don't even know what I'm supposed to say.
I know what I should say. I should say thank you. And I know you've already put enough time into this and it sounds like you're going to have some more time. And I know you have a difficult decision ahead of you, but I certainly appreciate your time and we wish you the best and I'm going, I'm going to be happy to be part of it regardless. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, welcome back, everybody. So it's eight thirty now. We've concluded both finals interviews. We go to the next step, which I thought I had it printed out. I think I do. As far as next steps go, we begin the process. I'm looking for that thing. That I guess, do you want, do you want me to read on, on cameras?
I mean, we had options basically from Tracy that we could either pick a candidate, just nominate and say that that was what our choice was. We could have an open discussion about both candidates and narrow it down, obviously. Or we can just kind of have an open discussion about our overall thinking and feeling and, and kind of go from there.
For whatever it's worth, I'm, I'm up for the third option. Just, I think we had two really great candidates and I think it warrants a little bit of discussion if everyone's okay.
I think it'd also be a great opportunity to hear how some of the visits went and things like that, that, you know, I know I wasn't a part of.
So I think that's where I'd like to start. And if it's all right with you guys, I'll just kind of rattle off a few things since I was the only one that attended both of the site visits. I'll kind of do a brief thing. Stephanie and I did the site visit with, for Mr. Sullivan. And Jen Squared did the site visit for Dr. Benia. And both, both visits were very informative, but for in different ways, I, I would say. So, and it's hard, I feel like, because obviously when we're talking to the host site for Mr. Sullivan, there's a greater, it felt like a greater knowledge of the candidate was presented to us. And I don't know if that came across because of the fact that he is the internal candidate. But the groups of people selected, I felt like were for lack of a better word or phrase, stronger. So the disadvantage was when we were with Dr. Benia, we had conversations with, she had a forty-five minute period of time scheduled to discuss with her students. She's an elementary school principal, so it was a second grader, a third grader and two, two fifth graders. And they were adorable. They were cute. I have so much more respect for teachers teaching on Zoom now, just to try to keep them reined in for a few minutes. Felt difficult, but I don't think they necessarily understood the questions that I would have tried to ask. So we kind of kept it high level. Can you, you know, explain to us this, that, or, you know, things you like, Ms. Dr. Benia, things like that. But she's been in that district for a while, so I would have liked to have seen her maybe reach out to some alumni to kind of be able to have some older kids, be able to have some of those conversations. Because when you compare with, you know, Mr. Sullivan's got a bunch of, you know, seven, seventh graders and up. The conversations, they were poignant with those students. They were, I was surprised and I know Stephanie and I agree, she was surprised and speaking for you, absolutely. But how strongly they felt that they wanted to have a relationship with the super, their superintendent. And I wasn't expecting that. And they liked the relationship they have with Mr. Sullivan now. So I thought that that was, I thought that's bold volumes. Like they really were excited that their principal who they have this relationship with could potentially be their next superintendent and they liked what that offered. And the other thing that I wish we had gotten a little bit more of, but she didn't explain it until actually at our couple visit, was she didn't have like a school resource officer or other members of the community. And that we found out at her site visit that she, or no, at the public forum the other night, that she only gets her school resource officer once every little bit. But it would have been nice because we did have Officer O'Brady as one of our panelists. And then also Officer Gilli was at the public forum. So just kind of balance, to be able to balance out truly apples to apples, because I think we maybe were missing some of that information. Now, just for the nitty gritty of it, I guess, overall for Mr. Sullivan's site visit, the number one thing was everyone couldn't believe how much they valued his communication, very strong communicator. They were impressed with his willingness to help across the board. It didn't matter which group of people we were talking to, whether it's students, whether it was community members, whether it was staffs, whether, uh, staffs, whether it was the teaching staff or the non-teaching staff. See, they, um, his number one weakness was maybe he's too nice. Which I thought was, was kind of funny. We had, everyone really liked that he's proactive, that he's transparent and they just really felt like he was a strong candidate. For Dr. Benia, her staff, it was her group of teachers and the parents, I think that gave us the most information. And she's an effective communicator was also there. But one of the words that kept really appearing throughout the whole thing was stern. And it almost came off as a vibe as a bit of a micromanager. Yes?
It was used quite a bit by everyone.
They use that word. And, and not always in not in, like, not in a negative connotation, but it was just a recurring scene. Like, you know, when, when you're, when we were having conversations, not one group didn't, didn't mention that she was stern. Even the kids, they, the number one thing they said was she was strict, but she was nice.
She, they also used the word stern.
Yeah.
She was stern. She's super nice, but stern.
Okay. So to me, that's almost like a double-edged sword because in some respects, I think having someone that is stern could be beneficial and helpful in some ways. What if it's the most prominent word to use to describe someone? It just left, it gave me pause. So that's pretty much it. You guys can jump in.
So another thing that I found just based on listening to the conversations, the parents at times, this is my personal feeling by listening, they felt pushed into things rather than being so the encouragement felt more than just encouragement. They said the choice was theirs, but it was a constant. It was like, they, I got the feeling I constantly felt nagged about getting, improving their education. Rather than like some of them said they didn't want to, they liked where they were, they liked their position, they didn't want to further. But it was just a constant, they felt constantly that they were asked to do something. The other thing I got just listening is when she first got there, and I understand there is a bumpy road process in when someone starts off. So when she first started there, I guess she had a really hard time with the teachers. So just fitting in. And I understand, like, I was trying to just listen to find out what that was. They had a hard time in the beginning and it took about a year for them to be able to work that out.
Another thing that was a big takeaway for me with Mr. Sullivan's site visit was especially, well, everywhere, but especially within the community. The relationship building that he's managed to do over four years to me is astounding. Not only did we have, you know, Chief Wishart, Gilli, we had O'Brady. I even had James White stop like after a meeting, every single person, finance committee, people that typically Steve Nally raving review. And same with Jen Silva, the people were like, we really, I don't want to focus on bridging that gap. It was very apparent that they said that they could see him being able to do that. And that was, I mean, someone flat out said, you guys are stupid if you don't go this route because that's something that the town needs. So that was a really big takeaway. As well, definitely the students, I think regardless of where we go, it was very apparent, not only that they already have the relationship with Mr. Sullivan, but regardless that they want to know who their superintendent is, that they felt like only seeing them at Christmas time and graduation wasn't something that they felt good about. Like they wanted to know who they were by face versus just like the person that might be standing in the hall here and there. So I think that for us, no matter what we do, is something that we can, you know, work on for sure. And I was just blown away with their maturity, the responses that we got from our current students and alumni were just to me, like the most valuable probably of everyone that we heard from.
Yeah. So that was the one thing about Dr. Benia was that the students did say she made a point to visit each classroom and spend time and get to know their students. So she definitely took the time to know who they were. And their families say that.
The family that spoke on her behalf, she does have amazing connections with. And it seemed like every single one of them, the families that were brought forward, had some kind of incredible thing, not necessarily a good thing, but just this unbelievable situation that has happened to them, that she was a true partner to them, which was remarkable. Like, you know, that was, it was a strength that, you know, these people that have had things that somehow related to the school in some way were able to, that felt that they could reach out to their principal and have them help. One of it was an adoption, one was a boss of a child. Just to think of a principal or a superintendent or, or a potential superintendent as someone that a community member can go to, a, a school community member can go to, to navigate something that's incredible was, was touching. And I think that's something to be considered, you know, the strong, strong community ties. But at the same time, you know, there wasn't anything that was that large of a situation that was brought up for the families, the parents of the families or community members or the students that we had on Mr. Sullivan's side. But you do feel like there's that sense of connection within the community and within the, you know, families feel like they can go to him that, you know, some of them mentioned that there was issues with their child and, you know, they reached out and they really felt like, number one, that they were heard. Both sides, you know, doesn't matter which candidate, but I think that that's really telling. Like the candidates that we have, for me, that's one of our biggest things is that we're going to have someone that is willing and able to connect to people on multiple levels and in multiple areas. One other thing from our site visit that I just wanted to bring up, which, and of course, it is just a perk of being internal and having that relationship, but when we met with administrators, it was said, and this kind of stuck with me, that we have an overall very young group. Our financial manager, our people services assistant principal, and they all made a comment to say, you know, they're, none of them are going anywhere. They felt like there could be so much work done here together for a very long time versus someone for a five to eight year and then potentially retirement and then doing this again. And that's something that struck with me. And I know that our staff made lots of comments on needing the consistency and really like closing that revolving door. So that was just another thing that stuck out to me that I really honestly hadn't thought of, but I was like, oh yeah, like you're right. That's definitely something to consider that you know, having someone come in at this point in their career to stay for the long haul. And it was really important to a lot of people.
All right. So I feel like that's kind of a solid recap of the site visits. What do you guys think about, should we talk about what we thought from the public forum? Because we do have those surveys. I was surprised at, first of all, the number of responses. I was, I was tickled pink, honestly. I thought we were going to get one or two. And I was really pleased that, so thank you to anyone that's still listening or will watch for, for filling out the surveys because really the the information I felt like was, was pretty.
I also really liked that there was a lot of people that commented.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like that. And I felt like those actual written out comments were very valuable too, to be able to read. And I, I, I thought that part was really nice where some people will check off boxes and not necessarily provide a written out comment, but I, I did appreciate those very much.
It was impressive, the amount of comments. It was really, and they seemed, they weren't just like one-off kind of comments. They, they felt thoughtful.
And they created a pattern really though. I mean, when you're really looking at them, you could see a consistency in them. Even for both candidates, you know, things that people really noticed and you could tell they were really paying attention during those activities.
Okay, so I, do we want to read any of these out?
Do you just want to do like a generalized kind of like what the feel was?
Their overall scores were actually fairly, were fairly close. I actually didn't do the math. I was just kind of.
There were far more responses.
Yeah. So Mr. Sullivan had, I think it was him, right? Yeah. Had far more responses. So Dr. Benia had thirty-three responses and I believe there were seventy-eight for Mr. Sullivan. And was he the first one? No, she was the first one. So his survey was actually open longer. I thought we were, we had asked for them to
Be cut off.
Want to be cut off, but it didn't, it didn't happen that way.
It was one in the same on a survey.
Oh, okay.
So she did say to make sure to note that.
Yep. So if you consider that, I mean.
It's also interesting when you look at who responded to the survey, you'll kind of see a difference in you know, at the top it says like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we had, but I say, I, I still think like, so for Dr. Benia, it was one student, fourteen parents, seventeen employees and one community member, but a total of thirty-three responses. I feel like statistically, it's pretty close. So seventy-eight responses, three students, thirty-three parents, thirty-three staffs, seven community members and two for other. So you know, it's, if you were to slice it and dice it, it's, it's pretty the number, the flavors about the same. So, I mean, everyone's looked at that and it has been through them. Is there anything in here that you think we need to discuss more in depth or?
I mean, just to be transparent, I feel like there were more mixed reviews with Dr. there and Mr. Sullivan's, every single one was positive of feeling that we should go that direction. Just to be matter of fact, not the one, none of the other, but just to let anyone know who's, is looking. That's, I feel like it's pretty fifty-fifty on hers. And then on Steve's, it was a hundred percent. a hundred percent. So I think, you know, some of the, some of the similar themes that are maybe were echoed you know, in earlier conversations with, you know, some of the site visit conversation, um things like that, I feel like kind of ran through some of the survey results. So you know, while you have um, you know, Mr. Sullivan's comments, you know, reflecting some of the, you know, he should just be our next superintendent, which doesn't necessarily give a lot of information, just might be somebody's opinion.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you do have other comments that certainly provide information as to, you know, why, you know, answers made them a fit or why they thought. Um, certain things, you know, made him the right selection, um or why um conversations they've had um made him a good choice in their mind. Um, and with uh Dr. Vina as well, um, you know, there were certainly some, um, I think there were just more kind of concerns as that this may not be the right time or the right place um for her to be the candidate here. Um, you know, there are comments like um, you know, exceptional hire at some point down the road, very impressive. Um, there are definitely a lot of positives.
That's funny that you say that because one of the comments that I wrote down during my um site visit was I almost feel like she might be a better fit in an urban district, whereas we're a pretty rural district, just because that's sort of what she's grown up in is these urban districts. And I feel like how some of these larger districts are run is different than how we're run. I mean, even just based in conversations that we've had, Chickaby is a much larger district than Granby and there's, is it fair to say that there's pretty, I feel like there's larger differences between a urban district and a smaller district? No?
There definitely is differences because of budgeting and funding and everything else is very different.
Okay.
It's not how they, you're able to utilize their resources and things like that too.
Okay.
So I'm just thinking um, just based on listening to some of the conversations. So we're looking at um our culture here in this community that's not just the school outside the school and what we're doing. Um, this individual has to be able to work within both schools. So it's two schools. It's running two schools. It's not running just one school. It's having the collaboration between the two schools. Um, one of the concerns is that she has only been at one school, has only had to deal with just one school and not have the same type of, because she just deals with the K through five or pre-K through five. So that's what her main focus is. And is it going to be a struggle for her to be able to come here and be able to work within ju- the elementary and the high school? Maintaining two buildings rather than one building.
I think that could be a shared concern though, because opposites, you have Mr. Sullivan who only focuses on seven to twelve at his current position versus that pre-K to six. So I think regardless, that's totally kind of the same. They're on the same plane, so that they would both have to really expand their.
Correct. And and I agree with that. Um, except the one thing that he has had is if we look past uh what he's been doing and be, and what he has been involved in while he doesn't do anything at the school, he has been involved in some of those processes that we've had as a school committee.
I'm actually glad that you brought that up, Jen, because that was actually a big poignant part for me during the community meet and greet was um, you know, when we got to some of the discussions that were around um the sixth grade and and that kind of process happening. And she was like, yes, I heard about that today. And I was like, oh, I wish you had heard about that during your research that you had done far before coming to this process. Like to me, that was a very poignant moment of like, I kind of, I wish you researched us more. I wish you knew about that before because it was definitely headline news for us in our small town. Um, so along those same lines, you know.
And the other thing that um concerned me just based on one of her comments was about um classes and the class size. So understanding that this community in the elementary school likes the small class sizes. And would she deter away from that based on because of where she is currently at twenty-five to thirty students?
I don't, the only thing that I want to say to that is I don't think she's wrong.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying based on our community.
But I also don't think she was answering, and I'm, I don't have a certain secret for her, but I didn't, I don't know that I heard the same thing you did. I think what she was talking about was kind of from her own students. So she was talking about in her experience what it was and then kind of from the research.
Right. And my feeling is, is how everybody else hears it. Because that was one of the comments, I mean, to me, it's understanding the community that you're going to. Well, that is, and she did it based on research and what she was doing. But is that how everybody else heard it? And I guess for me, like that part of it was more about, you know, was understanding the community and and doing that like relationship building and understanding like the district's values, like what they, what they want to see for their, you know, what the district wants to see for um you know, within the community, all of those things. However, you know, these are these other things to consider. And you know, I do think those are valid points. I don't know that it would change anything here, but you know, I I it's, I think it would be it would not be authentic to kind of who she was to research the district to the optimal level and kind of come in saying maybe things that she wanted us to hear versus
you know, right, you know what I mean? Like kind of who she is and what she values and what she understands and what she worked in now. So
while it might not align exactly to where we are and that's okay, I I did see an element with her of willing to take the time to figure that out with the team and kind of work on that piece. So I guess I respected that part of it um for sure, rather than having somebody come in to be like, oh, I got, you know, I watched eighteen school committee meetings and talked all.
Oh, yeah.
And I know whatever we're gonna do.
But in the same vein though, some, there, there have been a few things that, I mean, and it's hard. Audrey, there have been a few things in the very recent history of this town to coming in. And when we're asking budget questions and people are asking her budget questions, we're facing a huge deficit. And that's, that's not that many meetings ago where this is being discussed. And I feel like she could have come in and really blown my socks off because her resume is so impressive. And I was looking for her to have, to reach to me as a community member and as a parent to say, look, I know you guys have some trouble and we've got a tough road to hoe. Rather than it being where someone didn't know they were watching a Granby interview, that it could have been for any district, like, you know? And the, the sixth grade transition, because here's the thing, it's not gonna, we voted on it, but we still have this potential issue. So that was a hot button issue for this town. And it wasn't that long ago. And so, you know, we were, I have to do is Google Granby news and it comes up like it's, you know, so to me that, it left me just a little bit. I don't know. Like I was, I was hoping for more because I do feel like that's something, you know, when you're coming in as a finalist for something, you should have, you know, maybe a stronger baseline, under, baseline understanding of what this district has been through in recent history because like we've said, every time we touch on this, the issue in this building isn't gone away yet with space. We're having a school choice issue now with budgeting. And like it all kind of, it's all comes back full circle and we're in this vicious cycle. Let's see how many more metaphors I can throw into one sentence. But you know what I mean? Like I, 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 I feel like that could have been something where she really could have come in and um, and wowed us. And I, that was one thing where I felt like what, maybe it was a little bit lacking, like.
Yeah. And those are all, I absolutely hear you. And I think those are all fair points.
Right.
I just want to make the point too that like, just to be mindful of the fact that in consideration that one candidate is internal and one candidate.
Absolutely. Yep. I'll, I'll give it to you. A hundred percent.
Things to consider with that. Um.
But I just know for me, like every time I've gone for an interview, I am researching as much as I can so that you feel like when you're sitting in there to ask quest- asking questions and being asked questions, that you're at least peripherally aware of what's happening. You're not going to know the minutia and no one expects you to know the minutia. But I don't think that these kinds of things are minutia. I feel like, you know, class size, certainly, there's a lot to be discussed about that. Heck, I've even brought it up. Like, do we have to be this, this small? But you know, can we bring it up to twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty-two? I don't know. What's the number? That, so we can make space work better? And I, I'm not, I'm not expecting her to have listened to twenty-seven hours of school committee meetings where we've talked about class size. What I am expecting is that she's going to realize that class size is a hot button issue. We have a space issue in this building and we've got a budget issue and be able to come in and at least acknowledge those rather than keeping it such a high level generic issue that it could be a canned answer for any thing that she goes to apply for. And maybe that's just me being nitpicky, but it was something that I was looking for. I was looking for her to make that connection to me as not only a school committee member, but as a parent in the district to come in and be like, wow, you know, she's, she's got an edge on what it is that we're, we're facing. But she has, you know, she's incredibly strong for the early childhood stuff um too. That's, you know, that's her bread and butter. So it's, you know, again, you can, they're two very strong candidates. Is really what it comes down to. And I think that, you know, that what, is what makes it a difficult, it feels like a difficult conversation, like I, you know.
I'm gonna jump a little further into the interview piece if.
Sure, absolutely.
Um, so there's a couple of things that for me really stood out. Um, I've definitely found like a little more, and again, like I get the piece where, you know, Stephen can speak more clearly to things that are actually because he's here. But for me, where he really like tucked me in was on when we got to question four about um your question, Jen, about uh preparing our budgets and and how would we work with local municipal officials and all of that. And I really loved how his discussion around that shared vision, that you would have it and you would have it and and that our, our officials would already know it and have it and kind of that collaborative piece that was necessary so that when it came time to discuss, have those big discussions, we would already all be on the same page because we would have those shared goals. And I feel like we cannot deny the fact that he's already started those relationships. So this, that's one less hurdle we would already be going through because he's already built relationships with certain people in town that are going to be necessary for this to continue. Um, and you know, I was like kind of highlighting over here, you know, those objectives, those um communications and that shared vision. I, I like the idea that it was a shared vision, not just for the school committee, but for the town, our shared vision.
And along that line, the other one that I thought um he really kind of hit it on the head for me was um question seven. Um, I I loved, honestly, she had a great answer. I wrote solid and underlined it, like, you know, solid answer. But for him, what I liked is that he said it shouldn't ever be like my budget. We should be preparing it together. And that really stood out to me because honestly, I, I think that that, you know, we're starting to get there now. Like we're having pretty in-depth meetings with um Adam, you know, twice uh 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 um at, at our school committee meetings. I'm not confusing my budget subcommittee, but he's bringing up numbers to us and they're starting to make sense to all of us because we're getting more information than we may have had previously. Um, but I think that that's a huge, a huge step. I don't have as good a notes on what hers is, but I know that I felt like she um answered it. Um.
So hers was similar. She's um, she basically said, uh speaking to all stakeholders, can't fill a budget alone. Um, everyone is involved in the process. Um, look at the money and see what we can afford, what is the best and worst case.
I will say they both definitely touched on that collaborative piece and transparency and like nearly every answer. They both
Yep.
have a lot of that same value, which is great. I know I wrote a big note on my question ten um about like bargaining and on Stephen's, I wrote, love that, all caps, because I know we're going, you know, I was on that subcommittee and he said, you know, the negotiations, you know, don't start at the table. They start with the relationships that you build with the people um that are around the table. And that was like highlight bold, that's, you know, I, I see, you know, nodding, like that's so big. And I really appreciated that because I think that's a big thing, our communication and our relationship building. Like I said, that's going to be a big, you know, way to bring this district together, both buildings and just, you know, really take off as having these relationships. Not when there's a problem that's arising, but you know, prior.
Even that question, he reminded, reminded us again, that importance of us having that central goal, that bridge and that, um, you know, the if the, a goal is to improve student outcome, the goal is to be affecting student achievement and to having that be at the forefront of those negotiations. Because that is why we're here. You know what I mean? He kind of brought it back around to that piece right there.
So one thing that I did, um, you know, I made some comment, uh sort of notes in the margin. And um Dr. Vina felt like she was a little nervous at the beginning, um but as she got into it, her confidence level really low, uh really rose. And I felt like her ending answers were stronger um and more organized, I'll say, than the beginning ones. But I felt like Mr. Sullivan came in and was confident um right off the bat. Um, and felt like really all of his answers were, felt pretty well um organized.
Yeah. I think that's another unfortunately, just disadvantage of one being comfortable with us, knowing who we are and having those conversations. But I did say the same thing. I highlighted uh Dr. Vina's uh ending too and just that strong, strong responses. Um, she really did a great job wrapping up and bringing it back to, you know, her staff and picking them for quick, like that to me was really great. She seemed very gracious of, you know, like together, same thing, like they helped build me to this level and I can, I, that was really great to hear as well. I think that she did definitely end it more confidently than she started. But understandably, I can't imagine going into something where we do all have relationships with Mr. Sullivan. That's got to be a really hard, and she knows the community does as well. And so I do, I understand that nervousness, um but do think towards the end of that, of her interview, she was definitely much stronger and it did show that we're in a pickle because they both, at the end of the day, I think had a lot, like I said, of those same core transparency, communication, collaboration, values. So we're very lucky to be in the predicament that we're in, that we have two phenomenal candidates who are both, I think, who both do a great job. I will say that um, you know, in thinking about all areas considered, um, one of the things that um for both candidates, you know, Stephanie, you just talked about it too. Um, one of the areas that I think are things that kind of carry throughout their questions or responses um in the community forums, um, you know, the interviews was, you know, all about collaboration and teamwork. Um, for me, you know, Mr. Sullivan's also kind of went forward into that um, that shared vision and. into that, that shared vision and that goal setting too. So it was almost like, yes, I'm flattered. Yes, I want to work with the team, but I also want to do something with it. And it is going to be by creating that shared vision, setting these goals and then moving forward, you know, with whatever, you know, whatever capacity is related to that question. So, that did have a little bit of a different flavor than I felt with Dr. Benia. And, you know, I just, I heard a lot of that through the questions. And I really appreciated that. And for me, I think that was the one thing that I found myself really kind of meaning in a direction.
So the other thing that I liked with his is, and I'm not sure because she didn't mention it as much, he's very data-driven on where is our progress and constantly checking that progress. So he, just sitting here, listening to him, no matter where it is in administration, whatever part of that team is, everything is data-driven in the senses. I want to know where I am right now. Where do we need as a whole improvement? And I'm sure she has that. I just didn't hear it as much from her. Again, success to me comes from always looking at where the weaknesses are and how can we strengthen and the constant growing and learning from everyone, not just the students and teachers.
I don't mind continuing, like, this was a great conversation, but at the same time, I'd be very comfortable saying who I feel I would like to bring forward, at least on my own opinion. If you guys want to continue talking, that's totally fine.
I was just going to say that because I feel like
I feel like we're all saying the same thing.
I feel like we're at a consensus, but I want to make sure that no one feels like anything is left unsaid or there's something that needs to be done. But if we are ready, then we need, we need, what's that?
I was trying to rush you guys. Sorry. I'm just like, I feel like we're all on the same.
And I was going to wrap to that effect too, that I think what Jill's last comment was, kind of really wraps it all around for me because he was really answering my fourth question on his first, where he had already pulled in all those pieces and kind of Mr. Sullivan wrapped it around for me too. So I was going to end with that as well, honestly. Like, that's where I was right when you went to say something I was ready to too, because
Well, it's funny, we're all on the same page then. So all we need is, is a motion and
Can, yeah, I'll make the motion to, well, how I say this, I'm going to make the motion to
Nominate.
Nominate Stephen Sullivan for Superintendent of Granby Public Schools.
Do we have to say pending? Pending negotiations of a successful contract.
Successful contract, yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And Carol, can you do a roll call for us? Because I think we need to have a roll call, not just an Okay.
Ms. Marcos?
Aye.
Sofia?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Swella?
Aye.
Miss you.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. I do feel very confident that we've made a fantastic decision. And I would very much like to thank Dr. Benia for coming through this whole process with us. She is a very strong candidate and we wish her the best of luck. And, you know, I think that I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Sullivan. Hopefully, we can negotiate a successful contract and make this go. So we can take a quick recess and I can try to call him if you'd like. And we can call Dr. Benia as well. And then I can come back and just let you know where we're at. But I do need the numbers. Okay, and we're back. The time is now nine nineteen. And we have spoken with Mr. Sullivan and he has accepted our offer pending successful negotiation of a contract. And we as a committee are thrilled to death and we're really looking forward to successful negotiation period and getting him on board. And we want to thank both candidates and wish Dr. Benia well. And we also want to thank all the parents, community members, and everyone that's been following this process, the administration, the staff, parents, families, students, everyone. This has been a big, a big deal.
The subcommittee.
And, oh my gosh. The subcommittee was amazing. And the amount of work and hours that you guys put in is unbelievable. And it's, I can't even begin to express my gratitude for all the work that you guys have done. And, and the good news is now we have to do it all over again for principal. So there's that. That's fun. But anyway, everyone have a great night. And I do need a motion to adjourn.